All right. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Counsel, do you have any changes to the agenda? We do have one deletion. We're not going to do the tax increment county certification forms tonight. They aren't ready yet.
Although I could talk about it real quick when we get to that.
Okay. Okay. So if there's no other changes, we'll move to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the November 8, 2021 council meeting. Approval of November 12, 2021 payroll in the amount of $130,895.40. Resolution authorizing fund transfers. Approval of the October finance report. Acceptance of the beautification commission minutes. Acceptance of the Ways and Means Committee minutes of November 8, 2021. Resolution approving employment in the police department. Approval of November 12, 2021 claim in the amount of $4,760.60. Approval of total claims in the amount of $345,190.78. We had one claim to McClure Engineering for engineering services of $102,123.83. Tannehill motion to approve consent agenda. Okay, moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes. Have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Just explain the $4,200 charge on the Visa. Why that's separately. Just struck me as unusual.
You're right. It is an unusual thing. The, when we first switched over to them, they misapplied some of our check to them. So they sent it back, which means that-
You mean the bank did?
No, Visa. Because it's now a national company running it. So we paid the bill. For some reason, they didn't think it, and because it's a corporate credit card, it has to be paid in full. For some reason, they didn't think it totaled correctly. It did, but, so they sent us a check back, which then didn't pay off the balance. So then we incurred fees and late fees during the next cycle.
Billing cycle.
Billing cycle, thank you. And during that billing cycle, we talked to them, figured things out, and they said we're going to waive those fees. They didn't bother to tell us that you still had to pay them because it was in a different billing cycle. And so we took off the fees and then paid the bill in full again. Then we get a letter from them that we didn't pay the bill full, blah, blah, blah. They take our check this time, except they sent back a different check, which was one of the library checks because we didn't pay everything in full. And so then the second month, now we're talking to them into a second month, which is this month, and they say, okay, we see what's going on. You need to pay this in full because it's happened in a different billing cycle. We will credit everything afterwards or recredit it back. So because it's a reoccurring bill, we did pay that out of sequence normally because Visa is a reoccurring bill for everybody. That allows us to pay that out of cycle without necessarily having it go before counsel before we pay it. So we paid it to get it all straightened out. They should be, or they will be, actually, I'm going to say will be because we're going to have some words again if it doesn't get straightened out this next month.
So this is listed separately because we're approving it retroactively?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you repeat that? I'm just kidding.
More clearly.
Getting it right.
Thank you.
I got it.
I'd like dates with it, please. Dates.
Okay. Now let's call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Approved unanimously. Next, we'll move on to public forum and appearances tonight. We have the annual report from the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. And they had a lot of documents here for you to read, but I think we have several members. So Adrian and Mo, if, which whoever's going to come talk and maybe introduce some of the members that are here tonight.
Absolutely. We, I'm going to speak a little bit, and then I would love for my co-chair, Motier Haskins, to have a turn speaking with you as well. And then we have Nahom Abigaz here as well. And we, I promise, there's three of us speaking. We won't keep you for ages, even though I know I gave you a lot of documents. I promise I'm not going to read all the way through them. So yeah, we're really excited to share with you a little bit of what we've been working on. I'm Adrian Logston. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. It's been a real joy for me to work with Mayor Boyer and with my committee members and co-chair this year. So what I wanted to do is just cover a few of the main points in one of your documents. You have in front of you a description of some of our actions, past and present, our future goals, a copy of our mission statement. I included the speech I gave to council last year about why we chose our committee name. And then we also included a proposal for a resolution we wrote up for your consideration as something the city would potentially put out publicly. And we can chat to you about that a little bit more in a bit. But first, I just wanted to touch on some of those main points regarding what we've been doing this last year. So I wanted to start, once we kind of figured out what our name was, we decided to move our focus away from hosting events, bringing people together in groups, mainly because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we decided to put our attention more on education, both for ourselves and for others. So in a moment, you'll hear from my co-chair, Motier Haskins. He's going to tell you a little bit more about the educational component and kind of why we felt like it was something we needed to prioritize. But one thing I did, I wanted to mention about our meetings that I've really appreciated is that we have managed to lead these conversations with open minds and a real goal of understanding rather than judging either the topic at hand, whatever it is that we're discussing, or judging each other's reactions, beliefs, opinions. I think that's really important when doing this work. So that's been something I've appreciated about how these meetings have gone. So to carry on from our own education, we moved into sharing with the community. We started an ongoing partnership with the Fairfield Public Library. And this is something we really want to continue to build on. So far, we've been running several programs for over six months for children and also teenagers and all in close partnership with the library, using resources that exist there. And we really hope to add more programming and events at the library, hopefully other locations as well as we come more and more out of the pandemic. So there's quite a bit more detail in your documents about the library programs because it's something that I've been personally involved with, and I love the library. So apologies if there's more details than you actually needed about all of our library Building on that education, this summer, we were really honored to meet with the curriculum director of the Fairfield Community School District, Chuck Benji. We just hope to be of service, honestly, to the school district however we, however it's needed. And we're excited to just keep building that relationship and be available as a resource for our youth, kind of whatever that ends up, you know, however we can be of service to the school district, whatever it is that they need and that we can provide. So moving forward, we've been working on developing a citywide survey, which is something we discussed with Mayor Boyer previously. We've been really fortunate to have Nahom Abigaz on our committee because he has some experience in this field. You'll hear from him momentarily as well. And we've been starting to develop a website, which, the main purpose of this website is to give constituents a way to contact us with their ideas, their concerns, their questions, and for us to just have complete transparency with what we're doing and what our activities are. There's a little bit more information in your document about what specifically would be on the website, but I think the real main purpose is that it's a way for constituents to connect with us. So before I hand the floor over to Motier, I just wanted to conclude by saying that I think throughout this year, our work has developed to kind of be in service of this idea that creating an environment in this city of inclusion, of open discussion, of equitable treatment of others will benefit the city of Fairfield in the short term and the long term. And we just want to continue doing our work to ensure that those who consider Fairfield a home feel safe, feel welcomed, supported, and understood to the best of our abilities. And I'd love to have my co-chair speak a little bit more about the educational component. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm going to take this thing off if it's okay. Good evening, everybody. So thank you so much for your time. I'm so happy to be able to come here and address you and talk about the educational component. But first, I want to give a big hearty shout out and thanks to Mayor Boyer because it was through her foresight during a time that was very tough in our country, actually around the world, the summer of 2020, to assemble this committee. And so, you know, we've been very strong, you know, since that assembly. I think it was back in September of 2020 we came together. So I am a resident of Fairfield, 13 years. I love Fairfield, coming from New York and then Miami to work at the University of Iowa. And so my wife and I decided to settle here. And so we see this as our beloved city. And that's why I was so eager to join the committee and took, jumped for joy when I was voted in as the co-chair. So I've been asked to speak about our educational component. I have a few notes here. If you have in front of you the mission statement, there are two or three bullets, specifically bullet two to four, which talks about our mission. And our educational component falls right in line with that. Because what we really want to be, everybody, is a resource to the community and a resource to you, you know, when needed. The committee members unanimously felt important to arm ourselves with knowledge and understanding regarding many of today's highly charged, hot button issues. So we don't see ourselves as experts. We do see ourselves as a committee that you can come to, that certain organizations in the community can come to if they had some questions, if they needed a training, for example. I actually, I've been the elected one to facilitate most of the trainings, actually, and around town as well. During that hot summer, ITAL, iPhone, NATAL, Sky Factory, MIU, and MSA called me in to lead a few diversity workshops, or what one might call DEI workshops. Regarding our educational program, you know, I led the majority. I said, we have not only learned and discussed important issues, but also learned non-offensive language because that's important. We always want to be very careful about what we say. So it's about self-awareness and how we address people who might be different than you, who might be different than I. We might want to call some of that like microaggressions or implicit bias, right? So we've learned a lot about that. We also started each educational session with a reminder to practice critical thinking skills. So we're very careful about, you know, trying to, I am very careful about trying to indoctrinate people. So we start every meeting with what we call the cognitive emotional methodology. So when we are either listening to a TED Talk or perhaps viewing one of my PowerPoint presentations or maybe a podcast, we ask ourselves several questions. One of them is, what do I feel as I'm listening or viewing this? The second one is, what do I believe? What thoughts come up? What is my opinion? What are my values? What are my community and cultural values? Well, I had to use that today because I was just grading papers and I was at my computer all day. And I was listening to one of the news feeds and, you know, the trial that's going on in Georgia. And so I was experiencing some emotions about it. And so I said, slow down, Mo, and let's do what we do in our DEI educational sessions. And that means take a step back and feel what you're feeling. The other one is, what do I know? What information do I have about certain topics, right? And what was the source of that information? That's always important. You know, where did I get this source from? Is it from social media, from Google, from YouTube? We know some of that is not empirically based. So we ask ourselves these questions. Finally, in the cognitive emotional methodology, what do I do? What does it mean if I do nothing about some of these hot button topics? What does it mean if I do something? What are the options? What is next? And so we follow that cognitive emotional methodology. We're always reminded to do that as we are listening or discussing. Finally, one of the examples, there are many, so we had 13 months, actually, I think it's about 13 different educational components. If you need a list, just let me know and I can give it to you. But here's one. One is the how to engage in controversial issues and how to resolve conflict. That's like a two-hour kind of a training that allows us to see both sides of the issue. You know, when you have a conversation or an issue in front of you where one side says A and the other side says B, you can go on for that in that way forever. But if you are practicing the skills that we have learned with each other, then at least you have something to hold on to in order to get through some of the controversy with that. So that's just some of what we've been doing the last several months. I want to give a last pitch because the mayor and I, and Adrian, and Nahom, have been talking about the possibility of coming to you and offering you a workshop. So we hope that in the very near future, we'll see you in that way. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mo and Adrian, Mayor Boyer, and council members. My name is Nahom Abigaz. I'm a member of the DEI committee representing MIU or Maharishi International University. And I've been a member since about March. So it's been an honor for me to join for various reasons, one of which is that I was appointed by MIU. And this committee, for me, has been a huge resource in the world of DEI. So at MIU, we forward consciousness-based education so that our students can gain a deep, so can gain deep self-knowledge while studying the academic field they're choosing. On average, we attract international students from over 80 countries as well as domestic students all over the United States. Now, this is a mystery to you. You see a lot of our student staff and faculty around town. We're honored to be based in vibrant Fairfield, Iowa, where the dedication to sustainability, health, the arts, and now diversity are strong. We affirm Fairfield's commitment to diversity through the recent creation of the DEI committee. Now, we're a little bit over a year old. And we look forward to your adoption of the resolution that we presented today. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to look it over. It's very brief and, if needed, happy to read it to you today. Our student staff and faculty consider Fairfield home. They're made up of many genders, races, ethnicities, nationalities, socioeconomic backgrounds, ages, sexual orientations, and so many more identities with which they identify. And we, both at MIU and within this community, or excuse me, in this committee, are committed to making this, the town, a diverse, equitable, and inclusive place for them as well as the many constituents who live here already so that they may feel safe and choose to stay here to add their unique value and make Fairfield an even greater place to live. We didn't want to take up too much more of your time today. And if there are any questions, we'd be happy to field them right now. And otherwise, I yield the floor.
Counsel, I think if we have a couple of questions, I don't want to draw this out. You might have more in-depth questions that you want to ask them later, one-on-one, and I think that would be good particularly. One thing I've learned through this committee is this term, trigger words. And so I found it very interesting, and I've done my own self-reflection of when certain words come up, they might have a different meaning for me versus somebody else, or I have an uneasy feeling or whatever. And so I've had the opportunity to learn that term and reexamine it just in my own way and also talk to Adrian on several occasions about different things. And it's been, you know, really useful, I think. So I don't want to have a long, drawn-out discussion. The, because we might be here all night on that, but the resolution, the statement of intent for the city of Fairfield, I think we should bring this back to a later agenda, either in December or January, and consider that for passage. But again, you may have questions on that. So I'm asking you to individually reach out to the committee and talk to them if you have any really strong, you know, conversations you'd want to have or anything that's tripping you up. So, but if you want a couple more questions, go ahead.
Actually, it's, yeah, it's a request. I remember when I was emailing with Adrian about some actions that you could actually bring. Would your committee be willing to make a recommendation of a policy for the city council to consider diversity when appointing members to our boards and commissions? That is one of the few places where we actually have that as an option. Clearly, when you're hiring employees, there's already all sorts of laws about anti-discrimination. But when we get to appoint people to boards and commissions, to have as kind of a guiding point to try to have age, gender, racial, socioeconomic variety on those boards, I think would be really powerful.
I've been emailing you, so I can take this. Yes, I think that's something we've been discussing with Mayor Boyer about just utilizing our own connections in the community to find out who all of our constituents and people who live here are willing and interested in serving on committees and being a part of local politics in different ways. So that's something that'll be an ongoing project for us, definitely. In terms of making recommendations on policy, what our hope is, which is in the document I mentioned briefly, that we're developing a citywide survey. I think we all wanted to have some data to come to the council with before making any recommendations ourselves on what you could, should be, could or should be doing when it comes to making policy decisions. And I felt like that would be a good starting point. So this, we kind of think of this statement as a jumping off point for a relationship working together and for future action steps. And we hope in the near future to come with more data to back that up. Does that, is that kind of what you were talking about?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. As long as it's considered as a possible future action item.
Absolutely.
Because those kind of things, you know, the resolution and that kind of thing, it's just, when your city government gets behind it, kind of like the proclamation that was made for Pride Month, you know, it signals to people that we care, you know, and that we're listening and that we're sensitive to these things. So when it comes from the committee, it's wonderful. When there's something that the council can take action on, I think it's also powerful. I'm not going to say more powerful. It's an additional vote, you know, for this kind of thing.
Agreed.
And I can appreciate that point, that we need different age groups, lots of diversity in our committees so we get different viewpoints in different committees. So, all right. Is there any other questions or comments at this point?
I would comment that I quite frankly had my doubts a year ago when the committee was formed, that the members were going to be serious and had intent and were going to do the work to come to the council at some point with some thoughtful expressions. And you've definitely done that. So that's impressive. And I think from here, there's definitely possibilities for more engagement and progress in our community. So thanks. Thanks for doing that.
Any other questions? Again, please reach out to Adrian or Mo or any of the committee members if you have comments or questions, any clarifying questions on anything that you want. I mean, I've done that on several occasions myself, so. Okay, so let's go on to, and again, thank you guys for all your hard work for this last year. Really appreciate it. And let's move on to our next appearances from Brad Fager about political campaign signs and the right-of-way.
I'm still not setting on my feet. I have a new hip. First of all, I'd like to make it clear to the council that I'm not here to complain about the election. Paul Gandy has tremendous support and a tough man to beat. Congratulations. If I could bring up just a couple of items that I discovered when I was trying to figure out how to talk to you guys. Number one, I'd appreciate it if you'd think, consider updating the minutes online. The most current minutes you have online right now are May. And it would be nice if they were updated. Second of all, the form that you have in order to speak to is, it's an outdated form. And it's an image, which means you have to print it and then type it in a typewriter or write it by hand. I forgot how to write by hand. Maybe you guys figured that out if you looked at what I wrote you. And it made it very, it made it very, very difficult. But if you create a new form, up-to-date form, and you make it PDF file, then it can be typed on a computer. And so I would, I strongly recommend you bring the form up to date and then make it a PDF file. That would make a really big difference. Okay, so I'm here to talk about the use of right-of-ways for political signing. I'm only going to talk about it for political signing. That's, I think that's the main issue. And currently, I was told very clearly, especially by Scott, what the rules are, and Rebecca did a good job at the beginning, on what the rules are for political signs as far as the right-of-ways go. And there were two major rationales. The number one rationale was the utilities, that there was some concern about the utilities in the ground. And I'll talk to that one first. I went around and I talked with every single person who was putting utilities into the ground, all the different utilities into the ground. And the depth of those utilities are from five feet to basically two feet. Once in a while, the water, the water utility get to 18 inches, but that's rare. Now, many years ago, they got as close as six inches. But that's dead and gone. I mean, that, so I think that's probably when the current, when the current regulations were written, when the utilities were very much closer to the surface. But now, the closest are 18 inches, and that's rare. Vast majority are between five feet and two feet. And in fact, the listicle people told me, when I talked to the listicle people, he said, I go down three feet, I don't want anybody to stick a shovel through my line. And so, you know, that's the, that, I think that's kind of the feeling of every one, every one of the people that are doing utilities. So I think that the use of the utility rationale has kind of gone away. The second rationale is that the right-of-ways are owned by the city. However, those right-of-ways are the responsibility of the property owner. The property owner has to maintain those right-of-ways. And now there's strong, any right-of-way that is taken care of by the, by the city should not be allowed. That's obvious. And Scott, again, made that very clear to me. Scott was on me like hot biscuit, hot gravy on a biscuit, I want to tell you. I really learned the whole ball of wax. So anyhow, so I'm only talking about right-of-ways that are, that are taken care of by the property owner. And so I think the property owner should have some responsibility as to what can be put in that right-of-way. And I think a standard utility sign, I'm advertising here, I brought my, my sign, a standard political sign has at the most an eight-inch spike. And I think Paul's were even less than that, less than eight inches. And so there is no, there's no danger there. And so the property owner then has responsibility, as long as the sign doesn't interfere with traffic or pedestrian, pedestrian or vehicle traffic, I think it'd be a good, it would be helpful. The other reason, there's two more reasons. The third reason is, is that it's especially disadvantaged if somebody's running against an incumbent. Now, again, I'm not saying that this causes many problems. I'm just saying it is a disadvantage because the incumbent is known, and often the person running against the incumbent is not known. And some places, in order to put the sign in regulation, it goes so far from the street that a car driving by doesn't even have a chance to read it or can't read it. So I think that it's really important for, that every candidate have a fair option, that we allow that political signs to be placed in the right-of-way with the permission of the property owner. Okay? Now, my last reason is Scott. You know, this guy is our chief of, he's got a lot of work to do. And to have him running around the city trying to make sure that all the signs are in the proper place, I think it's just a total waste of time. And both he and Paul agree with me because a week and a half before the, before the election, I mentioned that Paul had three or four signs that were, that were illegal theoretically or against regulation. And those were never changed. And yet, both Paul and Scott knew that those signs were there. Now, I didn't worry about that. I mean, that's not a problem. I don't think it caused any problems. But it just shows you that the regulations really are, really need to be changed. That it'd be much better if they were doing that. So anyhow, that's, those are my reasons. And if the council would like to, I'll write up a paper explaining this and also explaining my recommendations for how the regulation might be changed if the council would prefer I do that. In addition, I- In addition, I could also create the PDF document, if the council needs somebody to create the PDF document. I'd be more than happy to do that as well. But the last thing I want to say is, I haven't gone away. I've caught the running-for-office disease. So you can be sure I will be back in '23. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brad. And certainly.
Questions, yeah.
No, I'm just going to say, if you want to look at our code and make suggestions, you certainly can. I think there might be some state code that we have, that we have to follow that may affect all that, so that would, I guess we'll have to do a little more research.
I know one of them, too, is that you didn't mention, is safety. And it's not so much with the, with council signs, but during presidential elections, when you get the four-foot by eight-foot, and you're sticking those on corners out, you can't see when you're, when you're driving.
Well, that's okay. I would, my regulations.
Yeah, and those don't, those, but on the presidential ones, they're not restricted to that.
But my regu, if I were to do what Connie suggested, I would suggest that you have maximum size for signs that are in the right-of-way. And you wouldn't have those bigger state and national signs allowed in the right-of-way. And it's not important for the big state, national signs to be in the right-of-way, because they're big enough that they can be seen if they're 20 feet back.
But they'll put them there if they can.
Right. So the, so the point, so I'm only talking about, this item, I would say would be the biggest. Paul's were actually smaller than this, but I would say that this would be the biggest.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Just a couple of points, Brad.
Yeah.
You actually can, I found this out in a conversation with Rebecca Loper, our city clerk, you actually can find all the city minutes in the calendar portion of the website up to date. So those minutes are posted. You might want to talk with Rebecca Loper after this meeting, and she'll tell you what the steps are to find those minutes.
Yeah, I, what I would say is, it shouldn't be difficult to find the minutes. They should be right, right where they're, they're easily seen, because people shouldn't have to hunt for the minutes or be given instructions on how to find them.
Right, there's a calendar. It's fairly straightforward once you learn it. The second thing is, as far as, and I appreciate you bringing this to the council's attention, as far as I know, when we were made aware, a supporter was made aware their sign was perhaps too close to the road, I think that's the issue. And in the right-of-way, we made the point, either I did it personally, I asked the supporter to move the sign out so there was in compliance. As far as I know, we did it when we were asked, very quickly, just like when you were asked to move a couple of signs, same thing. But, but anyway, I think it's a good point. Thanks for bringing it up.
You and I both know that I drive that road every single day.
Yeah.
Living in North Campus Village, that I drive that every single day. And I can tell you, there were illegal signs or unregulation signs right up to, right up to the election day.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. Good conversation. And, you know, this, actually, this topic comes up every election. So, anyway. Okay, so let's move on to resolutions, action items, and ordinances.
Before we do that, can we ask Brad to go ahead and create the PDF file that he's talking about?
We can get that done.
In-house.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, update the logo, too.
Okay.
It's got that old lamppost logo on that thing.
You can also do it with a Word document, but.
Okay, great. Good suggestions, Brad. Appreciate that, to update a couple of those things, make it easier for constituents. I agree. Okay, first action item is consideration of the fiscal year 21 Street Finance Report. Rebecca, you going to talk about that?
Certainly can. This is a report that's done annually, of course. What it does is it takes road use tax, capital improvements fund, and local option sales tax funds for streets. Take all that information, we divvy it out into what we spent on streetlights, on snow removal, and upkeep equipment. And it's just a report we get in, so we can keep that road use tax coming back in.
Motion to approve FY '21 Street Finance Report.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anderson, second by Gandy. Any questions? Not, please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next action item is the fiscal year '21 Annual Urban Renewal Report. Aaron?
Yeah, this report is actually another state-required form that we fill out on an annual basis that goes back and looks at all of our revenue that we brought in, along with our expenditures for each urban renewal area. And this is one of the harder ones that we do, because it's an annual basis and it's a little trickier, so, and we've had some issues with our urban renewal reporting over the years. So Rebecca and I have been working with Travis Squires to get that straightened out. We're getting closer. It's also the reason why we took the tax increment county certification off the agenda tonight. So the tax increment form we filled out is our, or the urban renewal report is already done and needs to be approved. The, basically, the debt certification forms need to be approved also. We're probably, I'm going to have to request a special meeting probably next week, if I can get with Travis to get those things filled out, but it should be a short, short, quick meeting for that. But we need to get those certified by December 1st.
Oh.
All those forms, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just out of curiosity, do either one of you know off the top of your head how many urban renewal projects we had? I open this on my computer, I can't open it on my phone.
Urban renewal projects?
Yeah.
Within herbal renewals.
Within those zones, sorry.
Off the top of my head, we had, yeah, not a very good answer.
Do you have a better answer, Mel?
Rebecca had a really great answer.
Like six TIPs.
I said there were six TIP districts.
Right. But in the, in the commercial zone down south, we didn't have any this past year, but we're going to have a new one because of the spec building. We did the developers agreement in neighborhood builders. We did the developers agreement up north in North Campus Village for Vasstoo Partners, and that was Phase Six, but then this coming.
I see we did multiple for them, didn't we?
Right, and this coming year, we're going to have.
Six point five.
Amendment to Phase Five, but it's.
Okay.
Six B. We did a rebate in.
West Industrial.
West Industrial for traffic.
We used a little bit on Burlington.
Highway Nine, or Ninth and Burlington.
For that pedestrian upgrade. City's match. That cover? Off the top of my head.
At least the big ones. Yeah, okay. Rebecca's like, just vote.
That's all I've got.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have a, we need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll accept a motion to approve this urban renewal report.
Still moved?
Moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, Aaron, anything else about that tax increment county certification forms that you want to add?
No, I will, I will get with Travis, and he and I will get that done as soon as we can, and then we'll, I'll see if I can get a special meeting for like a lunch hour or something to get that done.
Okay, thank you. Consideration of award of Lampsen Woods Tree Removal Project. Michael?
So Lampsen Woods has been unmanaged since the late '70s, and it's very overcrowded. So part of woodland management is to ensure that you're supporting the next generation of the hardwoods. It's a oak hickory forest, and the young oaks can't grow in the shade. So in order to release the next generation of oaks, you need sunlight to reach the forest floor. So this is a project to harvest a number of trees, older hardwoods, so they are valuable to timber companies. So this isn't a bid that we're paying, this is a bid where they're paying us. So we had two bids to remove these trees, and the rules are to have to do it over the winter when the ground is hard. There's a property owner adjacent to Lampsen Woods who's allowed, going to allow the trucks to use that entrance into the woods. And the funds will be used, that we're going to get from this, will be used for further restoration projects in the woodland. Some of it may go, see that little blue, there's a trail that's on a private property that that property owner uses, so that is not Lampsen Woods, that is adjacent to it. Property owner used that to do some harvest on his own, in his own woods, and has agreed to allow these harvesters to use that road. So we may have to use a little bit of the funds to put some gravel down and kind of make sure that road's in good shape when we're done with it. But it really helps to be able to get into it from that angle, because it's not a good way to get in from the west side, since there's a stream in the way. So this will enable the tree harvesting company to come in, take out the trees that have been marked. Now, these trees were selected by our current district forester, Cassidy Robinson, who worked with our retired district forester, Ray Len, to choose the trees. And then they had to get the state preserve boards to sign off on it. So the state preserve board took a look at the proposal and gave their approval. So it's been through two district foresters and the state, DNR State Preserve Board. Said, "These are, these are appropriate trees for removal for the purpose of ensuring that it continues to be a hardwood forest. If you let too many hardwoods grow and it gets too crowded, different species come in and grow in the understory, and then eventually, the large trees die out, and now you have a different forest. It's no longer an oak hickory, it's buckeye and other trees." So some people feel like it's counterintuitive, we're managing the woodland by cutting trees down, but that's part of it. And we had two bidders. What's, what are the prices on that? Can you scroll up? Or do you have it, Melanie? Melanie's going to come.
You've got it there.
Oh, yeah. So we had two bids.
There's only one attached.
Yeah.
There's only one attached, but they, Cassidy collected the bids, and she received one for $12,650. And I'm not going to try and pronounce the name, but then there was a second bid for Mr. Yoder for the $14,600. So we would recommend awarding the harvesting to Mr. Yoder. I will also say that we made sure to include that they do have to have insurance, a certain level of insurance, that was part of the bid package. So we'll make sure we have that in place before they proceed. And I cannot emphasize enough how important it's going to be for people to follow the road closed signs or the park closed signs. You know, the trees that are being harvested might be farther away and cause any sort of chain reaction sometimes with other dead trees. So when we, we will let the public know when we get ready to start the work, but when it's closed, it's closed. We had so many people going through step two, so this is like really serious now, guys. Stay out of it. But we would recommend awarding it to Mr. Yoder.
So I'll make the motion to award to Yoder.
Okay, it's been moved by Hallie.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Ham. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, please call a roll. Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda, house to do with the sanitary sewer aerobic digester, replacement number one. Melanie, do you want to just make a couple of comments before I open the public hearing, please?
Okay, so this is for the rebid of the sludge storage tank. If you remember, we bid this project a month or so ago, and we only received one bid that was significantly over our estimate. We still believe the primary reason for the one bid and it being over budget was due to the fact we requested a five-year warranty period on the tank. We, with this rebid, we have changed it to a one-year manufacturer's warranty, and the engineer's estimate is $700,000 for this, for the rebid. Bids are due December 2nd at 1:00 PM, so we'll know by your December meeting how things turn out.
Okay, great. So I'll open the public hearing now. Is there anyone that wants to speak regarding that? I assume there's nobody in the lobby. Then I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to the action item. So this, again, is sanitary sewer aerobic digester, number one, replacement. Project proposed plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion, questions? Not, please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to a sale of a real estate located at 105 West Jefferson. John, are you gonna?
We're going to switch in a different resolution.
Oh, we are?
Yeah.
Do you want me to go ahead and open the public hearing regarding this?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to this? Michael?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is Michael Porter, and he is on the library board.
Yes. The purpose of the sale of this house is that we, the library board wants to install a self-checkout system, so that this would add a great deal of, of, of improving the experience of library patrons, because they could go into the library, take a stack of books off the shelf, put it on the checkout stand, put in a library card, and they're all checked out. It's, it's an excellent system. We've been looking at these for years, and the technology has now improved so much that we think it's time to do it. But we need some money to do it. And so we decided to sell the rental house in order to get the funds to do it.
Okay.
The other issue is that the, the rental house is not in very good shape. So the person who's buying it, Joanne Reed, is going to put $30,000 to $40,000 in it to fix it up and make it a better, she, because she lives, she lives nearby and she wants to improve the neighborhood.
So council, this price is definitely below the assessed valuation, and he's just giving you the reason why that sale price is below the assessed valuation.
Yes, we were told by the, told by the real estate agent that in its present condition, it would be worth $70,000 to $75,000. And the nice thing about this, this, this offer is that the seller has been through the house, looked at it, and accepted all the existing conditions, and so we won't have to worry about, about that. It's completely as-is sale, which makes it very, very, very easy to do.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michael. And any questions for Michael, being on the board? He's kind of on the inside. I'm sorry, what?
Do we know the assessed value?
$110, yeah.
$110?
Yeah, I looked today, it was $107,100.
Yeah. I would like to say that all, nine out of, eight out of the nine people on the board voted to sell it, for this, to take this deal.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to this resolution. John?
Yeah, let me explain what I just handed you. What you have is changed, essentially, you notice there's a larger paragraph stuck in before the rest of the resolution that's in your packet. And all that's to do is satisfy the buyer's attorney's title opinion and make for a good chain of title. Both the library board has the ability to own and deal in property, they are affiliated with the city of Fairfield, and it makes it a municipal sale, subject to the code requirements for what municipalities do. So they had a board meeting, they voted, they approved the sale. Once that happens, the city of Fairfield is actually what this is entitled over at You have to go through a published notice, which we've done, and you have to go through a public hearing, which we've just done. So all this does is reflect that all of that has happened and that'll end up in the abstract title and that's the only reason we just switched in on you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Okay, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve sale of real estate.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That has passed unanimously. Ordinance number 1206, this is the third and final reading. Consideration of amendment to the regulations of peddlers, solicitors and transient merchants.
Motion to approve?
Okay, moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not, please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Under the mayor's report, I just have a couple things. A few weeks ago, we were going to do an online or a virtual town hall with our county assessor, Steve Wemmy, and due to unforeseen things, we had to postpone that. We are planning to do it on Monday night, the 29th, at 7:00 PM. So again, that will be online. People will be able to, we will livestream it, people will be able to ask questions, but we are gonna do it online. So you learn, you know, what Steve does as his job, how properties get assessed, how property taxes work. And so it should be an interesting meeting. The other thing is, you know, as we all know, the last couple of weeks have been kind of challenging for the city of Fairfield. And I got a card, it says, "This is tough, but you are tougher. Dear mayor, just a note to let you and the people of Fairfield know that my thoughts are with you at this time with the loss of Mrs. Graber." And this is a Parsons College graduate from 1967, Paul Emery, who lives in Whiting, New Jersey. And, I don't know, I just wanted to share that with you. I know people have heard from friends and family from all over the country who are, you know, supporting us. And anyway, I wanted to share that, so, thought it was very sweet. City attorney report, John, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing to give this, John.
Okay. Committee and board reports, economic development committee.
Economic development committee met earlier. It was the chillest meeting we've ever had. We mostly talked about food and drink and, we did have one item on the agenda. The community development block grant application for the Sustainable Living Coalition of Fairfield. We found out, I guess this morning, got an email yesterday that, Aaron checked this morning that to move this grant forward, and this is the grant we talked about and approved last meeting, we need a public hearing on December 13th, our next final council meeting, public council meeting of the year, aside from any special ones we might have. So normally this would be on the agenda, but it's gonna be in our committee report. I'll just read the title. That was the, the motion Katie made was.
Title.
Contingent that I couldn't read the whole thing, so. Notice of public hearing for citizen participation regarding proposed activities relevant to application for community development block grant funds.
The end.
The end. Period. Hard stop. So I'll make the motion that we set that public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Do I, did I need a voice vote on that? Okay, great, so that's, that's okay.
It'll be okay.
Okay, okay, thank you. Let's go to administrator and department reports. Do you want project update first? Okay, Melanie?
All right, just a few projects to touch on tonight to give you an update is if you've traveled on Highway 1 South, you'll notice that they have been working diligently over the last couple months. They are getting ready to wrap that up just in the nick of time for their contract, the date that was due on their contract. We, at this time, we're not recommending any liquidated damages, but I will, I will keep the project open until the spring so that we have the bond in case there is any issues such as cracked sidewalk or something that we can't see right now because of leaves and, and other things due to the time of the year. But that project is almost done. I believe at the end of today, all of the customers along there should be switched to the new mains. So I know some people have already seen some changes in their water pressure with the new line. Then on the 2020 street bond, 23rd, their final pour of the street was last week. They are going to be replacing some driveways tomorrow, but that wraps up 23rd. And the major accomplishment to finally get that industrial park road replaced and, and done yet this year. However, because we are getting into the colder weather, Ninth and C Street are not going to be started. We will wait and do those in the spring so that we don't get caught with a street tore apart and, and even colder temperature and snow coming at us. So that is where we stand on the bond. Then on the electrical, electric vehicle charging station, that is installed and there is some cleanup work and the bollards that need to be put in, but in the next couple weeks, we'll be starting that up and getting it programmed. So definitely by your next council meeting, it will, it will be up and running, definitely. And, and just a reminder, yes, more to the public that the city is not paying for this electricity, that the users to activate it, they use their own debit card or credit card, so they're paying, pay-on-demand type facility, it's not the city giving away this electricity. But that will be up and running very soon. We will have a couple council action items to do regarding this, mainly setting the fees for it. The way it works is we set the fees on the charging station because some cities do offer a discount or they may choose to make a huge profit off of it. So we'll set the fees, then the customer, the debit card goes to ChargePoint, ChargePoint writes us a check and then we pay a line for the electricity use. So we'll have to, we'll have to set those fees by resolution, but other than that, not much left to do on that project. Then finally, on the fire station, the next task force meeting is set for December 6th at 5:00 PM. The task force will be working to, working with the architect to finalize the floor plan and any renderings or elevations in order to start to discuss the referendum. Right at the first of the year, we'll hit the ground running on any campaign, public meetings. Scott and Aaron have arranged speaking to some service clubs already, so we're working on getting out there in the months of January and February for a March 1st referendum. And that is all I have for tonight unless there's any other questions. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Melanie. Aaron?
I've only got one thing. It's a reminder for you all, we sent out, I believe it was last week, a questionnaire for the strategic planning. It is due the 24th, which is Wednesday. So if you could, if you read through the questionnaire, on the bottom is Ms. Hanson's email address, so just fill out the form as best you can and then shoot, shoot that email to her directly. And then she'll be able to get, compile all the information for us when we meet with the department heads on December 1st and then as a, as a special council meeting on the 20th.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask a question, Aaron? How is this different from the, our 2020 plan that we went through last year? Like, what's, Fairfield forever, Fairfield.
Well, that's a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is more of a big, general plan. And this is gonna drill down to more specifically how we're gonna accomplish some of those goals from the comp plan in a one to two-year focus. So this is.
Strategic plan is what we're gonna get out of this.
Correct. And this is, and the strategic plan is focused on one to two years where our comp plan is good for 20 years or so. So this, this'll drill, be more specific and will give us more measurables with, with the department heads, with me, with, as a city where we're accomplishing goals.
In the comprehensive plan, there's, there's priorities, right? And we have in that priorities, one year, two year, three year, four years. You recall?
There was like one to four years?
Yeah.
So now we gotta say, okay, in that one to four year timeframe, what's the next